Okay, I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is the regular meeting of the Garden City Planning Commission. It's Thursday, March 12th, 2020 at 6:30 PM. Would everyone stand and say the pledge of allegiance, please, to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Would you take your role, please?
Chairperson May.
Here.
Commissioner Steenberg.
Here.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Here.
Commissioner Hunt.
Here.
Commissioner Walls. Commissioner Colletus. Commissioner Mativier.
Here.
Okay, next we need approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda for March 12th, 2020 at 6:30 PM as written.
Support?
Support.
Any questions, comments? Take your role, please.
Commissioner Hunt.
Aye.
Commissioner Walls.
Aye.
Commissioner Mativier.
Aye.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Aye.
Commissioner Steenberg.
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Aye. Okay, next we need approval of minutes from the regular meeting of February 13th, 2020. Mr. Steenberg.
Make a motion to approve.
Motion's made to approve.
Second.
And seconded. Any questions or comments, corrections? Hearing none. Take your role.
Commissioner Steenberg.
Aye.
Commissioner Hunt.
Aye.
Commissioner Mativier.
Aye.
Commissioner Walls.
Aye.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Aye. Next item of business is public comment on non-agenda items. This is something that's not on tonight's agenda. Does anyone here wish to comment on something not on the agenda? Seeing no one. We'll move on. To business items. We have no business items tonight. Other business, we have discussion of the zoning ordinance amendments as presented. We have discussion of revised amendment language uses in M1 and other potential ordinance amendments. So to start this off, why don't we take these one at a time? If you'd start us off, Mr. Ortega.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. So before you tonight is a slightly revised version of what you saw last month. The first two being the ones that had some major changes to Amendment A and B, so we'll go through them one by one. Amendment A, originally when, one of the issues that brought up all these changes was the idea of allowing a wider amount of uses within the industrial district, and that specifically being allowing health, what eventually is going to be called a health or exercise clubs. But in, when I was going through the ordinance to make sure that all the ordinances were consistent with each other, I found that there's some discrepancy between our definitions and what we regulate in terms of, and it's more about a terminology issue is really the only thing. So, and it's not, it's not anything really substantive in terms of the changes. It's mainly to clean things up, and that's the, the general intent of most of these ordinances changes. That's why we're bundling them together, is that it's more about cleaning up some small things. So in this case, what I've done is revised the, first the definition section. So on page one, I revised a little bit my health, my, originally was calling it, I think you called it a fitness center, but now I revised it to, I found a better definition I feel is appropriate. It's health or exercise club. And that's intended to allow for, to specifically define it. It's basically any place that, it's a use that's just gonna, people go for exercise, whether it's organized classes, or whether it's just, you know, like lifting weights or your own personal fitness situation. And this definition, I think, is good because it can apply for anything. It can apply for a yoga studio, or it's a small individual yoga place, where it's a, you know, the square footage would be nuts, small for those all the way up to what we have in downtown, being Planet Fitness and now LA Fitness. And so it just revises that definition to more generally explain it. And then what I did do was change the definition of what we have as indoor recreation center currently. So the red language is in, is our existing one that's being proposed for deletion. And then just revise this definition to match how we regulate it in other places in the ordinance. Other places in the zoning ordinance, we, we call out, in some districts, you can have both indoor, excuse me, in some places you can have just indoor, and that's usually in the C2, where we allow for indoor as a special use. But in the C3 is where we allow the outdoor recreation facilities. And so, but we also allow public parks and recreation facilities in the single-family district, because basically that means a park. And we allow parks by right in single-family districts. So this, these definitions are just intended to clarify where a recreation use falls under. And the main difference is, once again, the health and exercise clubs is anything that's interior. From a yoga studio all the way to LA Fitness. The recreation facilities are supposed to be those things that are more court-based facilities. Because even in our, when we regulate specifically the recreation facilities, we get into even things like bike, bike tracks and that sort of thing, like, not a velodrome, but basically. We allow for the possibility of someone eventually coming in and wanting to establish like a recreation facility that is pretty large. And so that's why those are only allowed in C3. So, it's kind of a long-winded explanation, but just for the idea that we're just trying, I'm just trying to clean up the definitions. So that's what's on page one, basically. And then, beginning at the bottom of page one, under the C, under the C1 district, that's what section 154 dot 271 is. Under C1, we would allow health or exercise clubs. So therefore, that allows for something like a yoga studio. Section 154 dot 286, it revises the language of the C2 district. Cleans up some things like getting rid of blueprint shops. But then also revises under special uses, that we allow for private indoor recreation facilities as a special use. And for instance, this is a way where, this is the reason why it's just a cleanup. In C3, we'd allow as a special use indoor and outdoor private recreation facilities. So that's why, so these, the language in front of you under, in these first three pages is just about making this consistent with the other language in the ordinance.
Okay, before we go on, on the definition of recreation facility, I was wondering if we should also add the same language that we had under health club to not allow firearm use in that, under that definition.
So something like such uses shall not include activities that utilize firearms?
Yeah. Why would that be a problem?
Well, someone could decide to have a gun range or something of that nature using firearms.
Right.
And I think, I'm not saying that we shouldn't allow firearms, but we should have a definition for gun ranges because that kicks in a lot of special requirements. Yeah, there's, there's all kinds of issues that come up when you try to have a gun range.
And that actually brings up a good point. Because I actually had inquiry from someone just today. Technically, right now, gun ranges aren't defined in our ordinance, and technically, so technically, we would have to make an interpretation of where it would fall into one of these facilities. So I think, in the next bundle of ordinances, what we can do is define, specifically define gun ranges, and then choose a district in which they can be located.
I wouldn't see it anywhere but in our C1 down there, but I see no problem with it in there.
No. It's right across the street.
It's firing line, yeah.
And technically, firing line is in Westland.
Right. But it's still right across the street.
Yeah.
Just happens to be the border.
Yeah, exactly. So, so this is, this is how this happens. It kind of spreads out that, you know, we bring up this issue and it points out another thing. We don't currently regulate gun ranges. So right now, it's open to interpretation. If you'd like, I can add to the list to make gun ranges the next thing we deal with in the next bundle of ordinances, to define it and then choose a district.
I think we should, because down in our C1, I wouldn't see a problem with it at all.
Okay.
Yeah, one time they wanted to put a gun range in there.
And you guys did what? That was only two blocks from my house. Well, you know, there's a lot, with lead in, it's, it's a big deal.
They, believe me, they have to take care of all of that, or they wouldn't be able to open.
Right. It's, it's just the exhaust from the thing.
There's, yeah, I know there's a lot of regulations, whether they're federal, state, or local, because a friend of mine opened a gun range in Livonia, and he had to comply with
Over on 96?
A mountain of regulations.
One on 96 over there, on the service road?
I think they're on Plymouth Road.
Oh, that, yeah.
Yeah.
And so I would envision just creating a definition, finding one that's applicable to most municipalities, and then mainly keep it really brief. Just say, gun ranges so be in compliance with all federal and state regulations. So that way, it's specific, it doesn't put the burden on us, the owner.
Well, I think we need to look at local regulations if we're gonna do that.
Yeah, and then, and then we could look at the local in terms of location of it, because that's, that's in the end, that's your, your purview. Your purview is you get to choose out of the districts where they could be located.
Yeah.
And we can look at that at the next time.
One other question. You, you took secondhand stores out of special land uses there.
Yeah.
Were they allowed?
Well, that is, brings up one thing that, I'm trying to clean up some of the existing locations of uses, and we're getting that to the next one. But when it comes to secondhand stores, I wasn't sure how everyone feels about regulating those specifically as a secondhand store, or because, for example, we, we just had a applicant come in, and it was approved for an antique store. And technically, we don't define antiques. Technically, antiques are, you know, used items from people in the past. And I was thinking initially, just, I just put that there to say secondhand stores would just be another form of a retail store. So that's one way to go, if you'd like. We could go the other way, and just specifically define secondhand store versus antiques, antiques or some other thing to define it, if you feel that secondhand stores need to be some type of further regulation.
Currently, is it, it's not special use now, is it?
Right, well, that's the thing, right now, under, in the C1, it requires special use approval. Excuse me, in C2.
Currently, it's not allowed in the DDA, correct?
Correct.
But Salvation Army is grandfather.
Correct.
What is, that other one on Ford Road west of Henry Ruff? Is that C2 or?
C2.
C2, and is it allowed, is it allowed in C2, or is it a special land use?
It's a special land use in C2.
Special land use in C2.
What is that considered even, is that, that's a secondhand store?
Yeah, they, I forget what they call the garage sale stuff.
Yeah, garage sale, yeah.
Yeah.
So it, I mean, maybe we should, maybe we should,
Resale.
Resales. Maybe we should define secondhand store a little better, and consignment shops, and antique shops, and, you know, just so, maybe, maybe we can lump them all into the same group, but we need to know what they are, I guess.
You'd have to, because otherwise Angelo's gonna have to go in there and try to figure out how old the product is when it's
Yeah, that's right.
Or it came out of a foreclosure cleanup.
So I guess, we can definitely add that, like those definitions to the next bundle. I guess my only question to you guys would be, how would you like, how do you feel there should be a distinction? Is it, is it that we want to limit resale stores in general, or is it, like what aspect of them, other than a broader retail aspect, and the fact that there, it's a, it's a interior space in which people come in, buy product, and leave? What aspect of the fact that it's a used piece of merchandise that needs to be regulated?
Well, if it's something that's been sold once before, i.e. garage sale, whatever, antique, that would seem to me to fall under a broad category of resale. I'm not sure how you define dollar stores, because most of them aren't a dollar anymore.
No, that's kind of a different thing.
They got a chain they call Five Below that
I think it's, I think all that stuff is at least new.
Yeah.
It's supposed to be cheap, but it's supposed to be new, so it kind of falls under retail, I guess.
I don't know how we distinguish it, or if we do.
Well, do we have to?
Well, that's my question. Like, how do you want me to separate them? Like, what aspect of it requires additional regulation?
Can you see a distinction for dollar stores, even though most of them aren't a dollar? Can you see a distinction between that and general retail?
Really?
No, I mean, in my mind, because
I don't either.
No, I don't think they enter into the picture. I mean, we're talking about resale antique consignment stores.
The only thing we did with that wasn't to regulate them down to, they can't have stuff laying around outside of the building.
Yeah, we just don't want material outside.
That's pretty much across the board, the hardware and whatnot. Well, if we don't do that, then how do we not allow that in the DDA? We need to provide
It's not an allowed use in the DDA.
Right, but if we don't separate that distinction from general retail, how can we
We can separate.
Police that.
Well, we're not talking about dollar stores, we're talking about secondhand stores. If you're not selling new merchandise, you can't be in the DDA, or the Central Business District.
Well, currently, dollar stores are not allowed in the DDA either, right?
Dollar stores, I think, we actually have one.
Sure, there is one over by Planet Fitness, two over.
It's a new, it's a new, yeah.
Yeah, there's two there, and there's one on Ford Road.
Yeah, they're all over the place.
Well, I know they're there, but I thought maybe those were grandfather ones, because we just covered this a couple of years ago.
That's what I was wondering, yeah.
We were talking
Well, no, the dollar store that we were talking about then was over on Sherry Hill, if I remember right.
But then it came down to what was allowed in the DDA, and I remember we said, we talked specifically about Salvation Army being on the main drag there and being grandfather. Well, actually, there's four of them. Or maybe five.
If that's the main distinction we want to have, is that we want to say in the CBD, we'd like any retail to be of new items, then that's enough for me, direction for me, because then I can just come up with a definition for secondhand stores. And that can be a broad definition of, you know, consignment and that sort of thing. And then we can say, those are all permitted, we can even say permitted by right in C1, C2, C3, but they're just not listed in CBD, and then therefore it wouldn't be allowed in CBD. If that's what we're, that, that's the main point we want to do in terms of regulating.
Then would the antique store and the garage sale type store, would that fall under resale as a general category? Is that how we want to group it?
It could be.
Rather than splinter it down with a, it's resale.
Resale or secondhand?
Some things are older than others, but they're both resale.
Yeah, so then that means if we did that, then we did that very basic distinction of new items versus previously owned items, then you could just say that, then antiques probably wouldn't be allowed in the CBD. But do we want to allow antique stores in CBD?
I would say no resale in the CBD or the DDA.
Well, we've got,
What we can do
We've got that antique store over by Planet Fitness, that, what, Antique Mall or whatever it is?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That's already there.
Yep.
Are we gonna make that a non-conforming, an existing non-conforming use?
What I could do is I could ask the DDA themselves, I could ask Kim her opinion on it, and the DDA Board's opinion, and then, because this will be for our next bundle anyway, it won't go with this. And I mean, I can come back for later discussion.
Yeah, if they don't have an opinion by, in time for next meeting, it's just something we should keep in mind. Doesn't have to be done by next meeting.
No, no, I, I personally, I would be comfortable with putting secondhand stores in C1, C2, and C3, but not the Central Business District.
Not DDA? Yeah, I would too.
That leaves, that leaves the one resale shop there, the Antique Mall, as an existing non-conforming use.
I don't know how much of what they sell is resale. I've only been in there a couple of times.
Probably ninety percent.
I think a lot of it is.
Ninety percent, because a lot of it's consignment in there. My wife likes going in there. A lot of it's consignment. You take it in there, give it to her, you can rent a little space.
Yeah, rent a little space and
Yeah, you get a four-by-four section of stuff, as much as you can into.
Oh, really?
And then they keep a portion of it for having the storefront, and you, you get a portion of it.
Yeah, so consignment shop should be included in that definition, I guess, but
Yeah, no, it's good enough.
Pick their brain and see what ideas they have.
Yep, okay.
Maybe we can find a midpoint there.
I mean, it is technically a resale, but probably seventy to eighty percent of it in there is probably antiques.
It's higher.
A lot of it's, yeah. But we're not, we're not gonna try to
That one is, that one, that one store, that guy, I mean, flat out said, that came through, he does cleanouts on foreclosures. And he gets good stuff out of them, it doesn't go in the trailer to go to the dump, it goes in the back of the truck.
Yeah.
And that's what's in there.
I don't think we want to get into trying to determine how old stuff is, or, you know, whether it's a true antique or not, you know?
No.
If it's used, it's used.
Then you have to get into the nomenclature of antique versus collectible.
Yeah, I mean, people who do that can't even agree on it, so.
The state says it's antique if it's 25 years or older for an automobile.
Yeah. Okay, well, we all good with the Amendment A?
Yeah.
Okay, moving on to Amendment B.
So Amendment B is intended to, instead of specifically talking about hookah in particular, I thought we'd take this opportunity to just briefly discuss revising the list of regulated uses. So the hookah definition is basically the same. I did change it to say legal inhalant from a hookah water pipe or other. And from my conversation and research with the state, with Lara's, excuse me, it's not in Lara's, it's the Health Department. The Health Department regulates the smoke, because it's smoke. So one of the reasons why it is specifically regulated is that, you know, the law was passed to ban smoking in public places, but then they did pass the ability to license cigar lounges, and then, and then hookah falls into any kind of smoking establishment. So that's why they make the distinction, and so, once again, this definition is just intended, right now, we're hanging our hat on the smoke shop definition, and there's, technically, I think someone might say that hookah lounge could fall under our generic lounge definition. So this would specifically regulate hookah lounge as in the smoking.
Well, we don't allow smoking in our regular lounges.
Right, no, well, that could be another, well, that's true.
And also marijuana is legalized now, so that would be a legal inhalant.
True, but, but then, that's why
That's why it's specifically eliminated from
It's not, yeah, but it's not legal inhalant in public.
Right, right. Well, technically, under the MRTMA and then the emergency laws, they, the state has decided to create a special establishment license for marijuana, and they also have event licenses they can do for temporary events. However, that's why in the definition here, it says, this establishment shall not include any establishment which is licensed by the state of Michigan consume marijuana in any form. So, and, and with the other regulations we have in the city, right now, there's no recreation or adult use of marijuana facilities.
There's no sale of marijuana.
Correct, and then, well, there's no, anything under the Regulation and Taxation Marijuana Act, which is anything related to adult use marijuana. We allow medical facilities, and we allow grower process of provisioning. That's the only thing we allow, is the medical. And so nothing else would be allowed, other than people's personal use, because that's allowed by the state. So, and then hookah would not follow, fall, they couldn't use that as a loophole for that. So, so then what I did is I wanted to have a real brief conversation with you about looking at the list of regulated uses, because the ordinance specifically say, you know, goes into this paragraph, which says, you know, because of the very nature, I recognize as having serious objectionable operational characteristics, and it goes on. And normally, that's, it's usually closely defined to adult use or sexual oriented businesses, businesses. So that's why those are all there. But I noticed in this definition, there's, I mean, list, there's a large number of lists, and I wanted to know your opinion on striking them. Because we've had some, not conversations, but just people thinking, well, if LA Fitness wasn't going in, could have that have been a good hotel location? Or, you know, if someone wanted to open up a bar in another location, where could they locate it? And even on this list of regulated uses on page four, you know, the first one I thought was interesting, that an arcade is listed as a regulated use. Then we have bars, lounges, tambourines as regulated uses. Hotels and motels, pool halls, and then tattoo parlors. And these are the types of uses which, why, in the past, and if anyone wants to, you know, add to the discussion, to his history as to why they're included in the list, you know, maybe right now, they don't, they aren't as, have a negative connotation as it once did. So there's no opinion on this one way or the other, I just thought it'd be a good conversation to have real quick. So you guys tell me, we can leave them all in, or we can take them all out, it's up to you.
Yeah, I don't have a problem taking some of them out, but I, there's a couple of them that I, I don't think we need to encourage more development of bars and lounges. And I don't think we need to really have more tattoo parlors than we already do, because we have quite a few now. So taking them off this list would just open up more area for both of those.
It would, that's why I just, you guys tell me what you want.
One of the items that we might add would be piercings.
Well, that usually goes along with the tattoo parlors.
Are they generally licensed to do both now?
I don't know if there's a license involved with it, but generally, when you see a tattoo parlor, they also do piercings.
Oh, maybe that
I personally, I, I don't know what everybody else thinks about that, but I'd like to see those two items kept on the list.
Are you, are we okay with the elimination of arcade from regulated use?
Yeah, well, arcades aren't as popular as they once were.
I don't think anyone's gonna come in and apply for one of those tomorrow.
That's why I decided it was weird to have it in the list.
Do we have, is the, is the place across the street, would that kind of fall into a arcade category?
A gaming place?
Yeah, it might have, but then, you know
I mean, it's not mechanical, but it's a, it's a game, it's a game playing type operation. It just doesn't happen to be, I don't think it's mechanical. I think it's
And I think for you, in terms of keeping this list defensible, do you feel like it's, it's objectionable and on par with adult uses?
I don't see a problem with arcades, personally.
Should it stay or go?
I, I think it should stay, because I think the place across the street would probably broadly fit into that category. We don't want to give it a specific category. Card, card playing, tech, no.
But is that not, it's game playing.
You're saying you don't want more places like that in the area?
No, I'm, I'm saying
Because that's what this does, the regulated use restricts the number that you can have.
Yeah, but we only have one now, so.
I know, I don't see that as a problem, really.
Okay.
What I would say is that it should be moved up into either a permitted use or a special land use, I don't know.
Special land use. I think would probably
If you take it out of the regulated use, that means you can have more than two in a thousand feet. That's basically what that's doing.
True.
I don't see them popping up all over, so
It seems, I mean, when
I mean, that one's real popular, that one's real popular, but they've got a big investment there too, and so I, I don't know, they don't
When they have events, they max out every single parking spot over there.
Yeah, they don't have any other competition in the area, as far as I can see.
And they would still be regulated, they still have to meet all the parking requirements, it's just the And they would still be regulated. They still have to meet all the parking requirements. It's just the idea of, once again, the idea of looking at our list of uses and the ability to either broaden them so that other storefronts, property owners can have a wider range of, uh, potential businesses in them, or else just regulate them like we've continued to. And it's, once again, up to you guys what you think should or shouldn't be allowed to.
It's not gonna hurt.
I don't think that would hurt to take that out and just put it in.
Special use.
Because when you restrict, you might be stopping people too, when they come to see Mario and they're like, hey, I want to open a business. And all of a sudden, it falls on one of these lists, and we don't really care whether, you know, like, fill one of the buildings. Well, now they're gonna just stop. Oh, I gotta go through all this extra paperwork and all that.
Yeah, and because of the fact that that's a regulated use, it may be stopping another business from coming into the area, because they're one of the uses that would be within a thousand feet.
True. Yeah, take it off.
So where, where do we want to put it? Uh, C two? Permitted use in C two?
Well, the, the restriction is gonna be, because it gathers lots of people, the restriction's gonna be parking. So that's.
It's self restricting.
It's self restricting. So we might as well say one, two, and three and just open it up, because parking's gonna determine it.
Because, because it also allows it to open up itself and say, if someone wants to have one of these in a C one, they just have four hundred, five hundred square foot. If they can fit it on the, on it with enough parking, then they're good.
Yeah.
Because, yeah, you're absolutely right. It's self regulating in terms of the parking, so.
Yeah. I think we just open it up to one, two, and three.
Yeah, we can put it in, uh, C one, I guess.
Okay. And then, so.
Hotel and motel, I, I don't have a problem with taking that off completely and putting it in, uh, C two. Just as, uh, permitted. Well, it should be a special land use, I guess.
Special land use.
Yeah. So C two would give it C two and C three. And then, uh, pool hall. I mean, they're kind of out of fashion right now.
I think that falls in the arcade category.
Yeah, same, kind of the same as an arcade.
Yeah.
There's one down on Ford Road that's been there forever, right?
Yeah. In Westland?
You said, what, Angelo's, is it?
Yeah.
And just to be clear, we are, we're gonna keep bars and lounges and taverns on the list.
Yeah.
Which, do we need them on our list, because the state pretty much regulates that?
Yeah, well, that's one other, actually, one other aspect of it. It's from, from my limited knowledge of the Liquor Control Commission. In the past, municipalities usually have a finite number of alcohol, uh, licenses. Now they pretty much can have as many as they want, because there's so many different way, I mean, there's, there's a lot of different ways to obtain the liquor licenses now. And, and for exa- and that's why you get things like Royal Oak and Downtown Plymouth and with so many liquor licenses in one location. The state finds extenuating circumstances to allow more and more to open.
Yeah, do you have the money for the license? Yes, you can.
That's an extenuating circumstance.
Are you bondable? Yes, okay.
Gonna take a big bucket.
Yeah. I don't know. I can, I think keeping them spread apart a little bit is a good thing.
There's so many of them have closed up in the last ten years that
Yeah.
it's not really that much of a concern.
So we want to put maybe pool and billiard hall as, uh, permitted use in C two? Rather than regulated use?
It could almost go in C one, too, it seems like.
That's.
If you got enough.
Seems like a, it seems like a more of a neighborhood, uh, business type thing, C one. It just doesn't seem appropriate to me for C one, but.
I'm kind of looking at the intensity a- as well, you know, it, it's probably not gonna do a heck of a lot during the day. It probably does more of an evening.
Yeah.
And once again, in our city, it's self regulating with the parking.
Right. Now, I don't see people knocking down your door wanting to open a pool hall either, so.
They still do a pretty good business down the street, from what I can see. I've been there a few times. But there's not a lot of them. There was that other one on Wayne Road that burnt a couple of years ago, and they never rebuilt that one.
So then that's allowed in C two or C one?
Uh, what does everybody think? Uh, C two for pool hall?
Yep, okay. And then on page five, uh, the first change is to.
Oh, be, yeah, okay. Uh, under permitted uses and structures, I had a question here about why we don't allow, number six, why we don't allow, uh, carryout restaurants in C two. This is C three. Why we allow restaurants in, in C two, why don't we allow carryout?
I think we do.
Looking back at the.
At the other page?
The other page, I couldn't see carryout. They had a definition without carryout.
Oh, I see. So you're saying, so this says carryout restaurants, and then this, uh, and the C two, carryout restaurants, standard restaurants without drive-through facilities. And then C three, it's standard and carryout restaurants without drive-through facilities. So, should we just make those consistent?
Make them to the same, yeah.
Yeah. So it's list carryout restaurants by itself, and then standard restaurants without drive-through? Or do we need carryout restaurants without drive-through?
Yeah, we should say without, because that's a special land use.
So then in the C two, I can make it look just like C three and say, carryout and, standard and carryout restaurants.
Yeah, I, I think so. I don't see any reason not to have carryout in C two. Does anybody?
Okay, C two, carryout restaurants are listed in C two.
Are they?
Mm-hmm. Do we go back to page two? On pa- on page two at the bottom, under permitted uses and structures, and that under.
Oh, yeah. Well.
Well, the terminology is different.
We have, yeah, the terminology is different. I mean, maybe we could just make it the same.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep, we can do that.
Okay, sorry I interrupted you there.
No, no, no.
Go back to.
Yeah, and so on page five, uh, the last thing at the top of the page, in the list of regulated uses, you would add hookah lounge. It would clean up a typo of, right now, med- it still says medical marijuana clinics as a regulated use, but that's, that's no longer the case. That's under the old special use, uh, definition. Now, they're just a special use in, in the industrial district.
Yeah, just in M one.
Yeah, just in M one. And then finally, you know, tattoo parlor is on there as a list of regulated uses. I wasn't sure what the final decision was on that, because one other aspect of it, it's kind of, uh, different nowadays, is that there are certain, um, uh, businesses that, that do things like, uh, permanent makeup and.
That's not the primary thing, though, is it, of the?
Some places do want to come in and that's like.
Westland's got one.
And there's another one, another thing called microblading, in which cancer patients and those, and, and anybody actually can. Apparently, it's, it's the permanent use of ink under the skin to create eyebrows and that sort of thing. Um, and.
Is that medical, though? Or is that, is that fall?
Well, in some places, it's, it's, they, it's more cosmetic. And, you know, I, I could sometimes allow it, sometimes, but, but our definition of tattoo parlor is very broad. It says the permanent, the placement of, uh, ink underneath the skin in a permanent or a temporary state, or something to that effect. So it's very broad, and so sometimes it can kind of include those type of uses. And then also nowadays, people, you know, I wasn't sure what your opinion is in, in terms of tattoo parlors and whether they are the same connotation as when it was when they were added to the list, but it's up to you.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with tattoos in general, but I, I just don't think we need to have more tattoo parlors. And I'm, I don't, I guess I don't see it as a problem if, if the cosmetic tattoos for makeup or eyebrows are part of that or not, because I think that probably is going to, those places are gonna find themselves in malls and different types of, uh.
Westland Mall has one now.
Yeah. So, uh, I, I would just like to keep it as is.
Yeah. Okay. So then, in terms of the list of uses, that first section we were just discussing was that portion of the ordinance that just regu- that defines regulated uses. Then section one fifty-four dot three oh one is the list of C three. So to be consistent, under special land uses, I was, I would revise it based on what you just told me. We would remove arcades from, remove arcades, hotel motel, and pool and billiard hall from the list of regulated uses, but keep bars, lounges, taverns, and tattoo parlors. One thing that was interesting is the, like, fortune telling and similar uses. It's not listed on our general list of regulated uses, but is listed under C three as a regulated use. And I wasn't sure what your opinion were on those places.
I don't know.
I don't see a really proliferation of them, but it's up to you to tell me.
Yeah, I, I'm not a big fan, but I don't see them as a big problem in the community.
Have one?
I don't think we even have one.
Know of one.
I don't know.
The nearest one is probably Ford Road and, uh.
Central City.
Central City Park.
Yeah, there's one down there.
And it's been there a long time.
Yeah.
They're usually pretty small.
Out of the way anyways. They're usually pretty small and out of the way. I forgot that one wasn't even down there.
Yeah. Anybody think they need to be a regulated use?
No.
They need to eat up one of our small buildings that we need to.
Yeah, could be, yeah, right. They might pay rent.
They'll regulate themselves. They'll come, they'll come into town and be out of business in a couple of months if.
Yeah, they, that could be.
You got one that far away, people that want to do that are gonna drive there to.
Oh, where do we want to put them, though?
Right now, if, if it wasn't on the list, then when someone comes in, I'd call them a service use. So then, right now, they'd go into a C one, C two, or C three.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah, they're pretty small.
That sounds okay. Yeah.
Minimal parking.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They're quiet.
Yeah, they'll have one employee and one customer, so.
Yeah.
Need two parking spaces.
And they'll know when the customer's gonna show up.
Yeah, that's right.
That's when they'll open the door.
That's right.
Okay.
They know when.
So I will make sure that the list under, of regulated uses under C three is as you directed me for.
Okay.
And then pretty much, that's the end of amendment B, and then all the other amendments are pretty much the same. The one difference is just that I, I took out completely our discussion about, uh, modifying legally non-conforming signs. So everything with legally non-conforming signs will stay as is.
Let's leave the signs alone.
Yep, we're gonna leave that alone. Um, under amendment C is as you saw before, which it would just allow health and exercise clubs in the industrial. And amendment D would revise, oh, I'm sorry, one, one minor thing. Amendment D, under the minor site plan modification, it's as you saw before, except I did change it. So that on page twelve, a minor site modification would be only something that, where the increase or decrease the floor area by not more than fifteen percent or one thousand square feet. Currently, it's twenty-five percent or three thousand square feet. And I changed it as you directed me to have, have it say a minor amendment, which would get administrative review and approval, would be a fifteen percent increase in floor area or one thousand square feet. Anything larger, they have to come before you.
Okay.
In the minor modifications.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Minor modifications under, uh, three, change in building height. What does that?
If someone wants to add a second story. So if their footprint stays the same, would they add a second story?
And that would be under ma- a minor site.
As long as it was under that square footage. Yeah. And it didn't exceed the current height limits.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, because anything that is gonna propose needing a variance, they have to come to you anyway.
Okay.
Because nothing can get a variance without, for new construction, without getting approval from you as well.
What's our height again? Thirty-four?
Thirty-five, thirty-five.
Thirty-five.
Yeah.
Two and a half stories.
They have thirty-five foot ground ladders, so they can reach slightly less than that, because you gotta put it on an angle.
I offered that forty I got for you, any, anytime you want.
Talk to the captain.
Give it away.
Jump.
Give it away.
Yeah.
So that, so that's the only change inside amendment C. Amendment D is exactly as you saw before. It would remove the public hearing requirement at city council for zoning ordinance amendments or special land use. And that's because you already hold a public hearing right here.
Yeah, that seems redundant.
Yeah. And then amendment E is ju- same as it said before. It would allow, would broaden the definition of, uh, the, the State Farm, straight farmhouse historic district to allow other historic buildings or sites to be designated as such. And there isn't really a, necessarily a regulation benefit. It's just, it's a way to indicate that it's a, it's a place of significance in the city, basically, is all it really does. Because all the regulations inside that district are the same as single-family residential. In terms of setbacks and that sort of thing.
This would just allow it to be opened up if we wanted it to, right?
Correct.
Yeah. Like if we wanted it to have the Oddfellows Hall.
And that's exactly.
And the adjoining property.
Yep, that's exactly the intent.
Yeah.
That's it.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that. Uh, could we back up, though? I missed one. Item back, uh, on amendment C, uh, permitted uses. On the next page, it's, uh, after Junkyard's number ten, there's instruction dance studios. That was eliminated?
And because I thought that the definition of a health or fitness club would include, be inclusive of that.
Oh, really?
Yeah. And I, and if, if I recall correctly, last time you mentioned to me that one of the reasons for this specificity of an instruction dance studio was to make sure it was distinguished from an adult use, strip club, basically, dance, dance club. And I, so I thought that's why there was that distinction.
Okay.
So I wasn't, did I?
I don't know. I, I was just wondering about that.
Because if.
Because, I mean, we do now have one in, uh, the M one. And then, and I didn't wanna necessarily eliminate it, because we were, you know, opening that up more than closing it down. But you think that would be covered under the, uh, other definition? Yeah, I guess, I don't have a problem with that. I just didn't, uh, follow that logic, I guess. Okay. For, anything else on the amendment? We all squared away there?
Yep, all squared away with those. I guess one last thing we'll say is one recent request by some members wanted you to consider, right now, under the sign ordinance, we allow ground monument signs, but we also still allow pole signs. Twenty feet high, uh, forty-eight square foot total area allowed. Um, I was. I wasn't sure if you wanted to continue to allow that practice?
Yeah, I think that's something we should consider eliminating personally because, uh, I mean, pole signs seem to be kind of on the way out. You know, monument signs are the preferable type that we've been looking for.
Plus, we're trying to push the buildings forward anyways on Ford Road and all that, right?
Yeah.
Why would you need a pole sign?
Yeah, uh.
And one thing we could do is if you're not, depending on how you feel, we can include it in the amendments as a strikeout, just eliminate all the pole sign language. And we can hold the public hearing and see what the public has to say.
Some of the stuff we should run by the, uh, DDA, too.
Well, they should be getting our.
They are, they.
They get all of our packets.
Before we, because we had a, a really vast discussion over signage in the windows, with the lights, without the lights, on the poles, uh.
Yeah, they did a very exhaustive study on that.
Yes, we did. Yes, we did.
I don't know, I think.
So did councils, so did.
I know some communities have eliminated pole signs and required the, uh, removal of existing pole signs after a period of time. But if we just made them an existing non-conforming use and allowed them to stay as long as they are in compliance with the previous ordinance, I think we could go in that direction.
And that's how most communities deal with it.
Raise quite as much of a stink.
Yeah.
With the business people.
Yeah.
Rather than telling them they gotta take their sign down.
It's not cheap to do either.
Because they.
It's not cheap to do either?
No, no, and put up a new monument sign if that's what they want.
Of course, the foundation, that's weather dependent.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, no. I think the monument signs look a lot better than the pole signs. They're a little classier.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I think that would be the way to go. And if there's no room for a monument sign, then they would have to stick with building signs. I, I personally would, would like to see us, uh, underneath the pole signs. We can start, they can start being phased out in that respect.
Yeah.
As long as it's when you, when there's a change of ownership or something like that versus not going in there and forcing a existing business to do it.
Well, could we include that language with, if the builder changed?
Do you wanna put a moratorium, like, ten years?
I don't.
No.
Personally, I wouldn't wanna do that.
Because you have, like, the area from Middle Belt down to Kmart, that's pretty much one owner and he's had that for a long time. Pretty much. Beyond, beyond, um.
There's no pole signs, huh?
No, but I'm saying any, you'd look at other businesses in the city that have been.
The length of ownership, yeah.
Same owner forever and ever.
That's true.
Use a different language than.
Well, never.
Well, use different language than what I just said. In other, a change of that business. Instead of ownership.
Not necessarily a change of ownership, but a change of the use.
Correct, where if, if one business goes out and they lease that to someone else, then, at that point.
And that's what would happen because.
Yeah.
With the legally not, with the non-conforming language that you wanted to keep in, that's what happens when the, when a business goes away, if they're gone for six months, then the sign is, has to be removed.
Don't you deal with, don't you deal with them every time anyways? Like, and a new business goes in, they have to show you their sign info.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so they would just be all the same.
So that would be the ca, and usually what happens is like they'll have, they'll look at the options. And, and that's why, actually, I don't know if you noticed, but that's why one of the, um, I think it was, it wasn't Smokers Depot, it was another one of those smokers places that they, they came in and they asked for a pole sign and because it was on the books, I had to give them a twenty-foot tall, forty-eight square foot area. Pole sign. So now from now, this point forward, there would be no new signs. I mean, depending on public hearing.
If the, yeah, if the business changed use, then they'd have to take it down and.
Yep.
Yeah, I think we should go in that direction.
Yeah, I misspoke, I misspoke with the owner. You're right, owner of property. Something that owned it for fifty years and you'd never get it changed.
Yeah.
Ken Properties owned the building that Kmart's in for sixty-eight years, sixty-six years. We'd be waiting a long time.
Mm-hmm.
So.
So I can add that to the bundle and it'll just be a strike through of all that pole sign language. And if you direct us to schedule a public hearing in the next meeting, it'll be there.
I think we should and run it past DDA at the same time.
Someone wanna make a motion to, uh, have a public hearing? Mr. Steenbur.
Make a motion to, uh, schedule that for a public hearing and also notify the DDA of what we're doing here.
Okay.
Second.
Support. Supported. Uh, take your role, please.
Commissioner Steenbur.
Aye.
Commissioner Walls.
Aye.
Commissioner Mativier.
Aye.
Commissioner Hunt.
Aye.
Commissioner Turnbull.
Aye.
Chairperson May.
Aye. Okay, uh, next item is commissioners' comments regarding planning and zoning matters. Mr. Walls?
I don't think I have anything. I've seen things are moving along, so I wasn't here the last meeting, but I think we're on, we're on page right.
Yeah.
So, good.
Commissioner Mativier?
I'm good.
Good.
Nobody's been past, uh, Kmart in the last few days.
Well, today they.
It's about, it's way on the ground now.
Yeah.
Ooh, I missed it today.
Yeah, today they, they made big progress tearing that down.
Yeah, and, uh, Monday and Tuesday of this week, both Dearborn Heights and Garden City used the building and the site to do emergency drills.
Yeah, the fire department was there doing emergency drills on the building. They talked to the general contractor and he told them they could do anything they wanted to the building. So I know they were up on the roof cutting holes and, uh, Haz, I heard the hazmat team was over there doing some training and.
Oh, cool.
Yeah.
I was wondering why.
So that's well on the way.
What they were over there.
Yeah.
Anything new on McDonald's? Or have they been cleared with Detroit Edison?
From what I've heard, um, paperwork was sent to New Jersey to whoever got ever signature from McDonald's or DTE, and then it went back to DTE and and for, and I believe that's the reason right now that the McDonald's only has a drive-through open is because they're starting interior demo and they're gonna eventually start. Because they have their permanent hand, it's just DTE was the only holdup.
So you think that's, because I heard a rumor that they had settled with DTE.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I heard that the right people were finally contacted.
Yep.
At DTE and they put it through.
Yep, that's what I heard.
So when they come in asking for the electrical and the gas permits to chop those.
Six months, come back and.
Yeah, exactly.
That's all I have.
Mr. Hunt?
I had something there, but you guys just answered my question. That's what I was gonna see, that if we were getting some, uh, our guys could get some free training on that building. I saw them out there for two days.
Yeah.
For the same reason, I figured it was training, but.
I thought it might have been proactive because they were cutting the brackets for the AC units, but.
Nope.
Found out different.
Mr. Turnbull?
Nothing.
Ariel, nothing? Brian, anything?
Nothing, no.
Okay, well, I don't have anything. Uh, everybody's aware that Kmart's coming down and making big progress over there, so.
And if I.
I, the only question I had was, did we have any communication with them about the parking situation over there for the other businesses?
Uh, we did. They, they've spoken with the property owner of the, of the building with the tax business. And that's the reason why they have that small parking lot segment available. We've had other, both the DDA director and myself had conversations with the general contractor. According to him, because of their construction schedule, they're gonna be, they've been, they're gonna start tearing up asphalt, uh, as soon as they can because they need to get, do a lot of groundwork and they're gonna put in a French drain and a lot of other stormwater and utility issues.